Good evening, welcome to Tupelo City Council Meeting, December the 5th, 2017. Tonight we'll have our invocation by Councilman Mike Bryan, our pledge allegiance by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Would you all please stand?
Mr. President, the invocation will be led by Fire Chief Thomas Walker tonight.
Let us pray. Most loving and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the day, we thank you for the blessings you bestowed on us, we thank you for your son who died on the cross. We ask your forgiveness for our sins and shortcomings and where we fail you. Lord, as the city, we pray for those that it's our duty to pray for, the sick and afflicted, those less fortunate than us. Lord, I ask that you be with this group of elected officials as they conduct the business of the city. Let your spirit fill their heart in the decisions that they make and your reflection show in all those decisions. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we are honored tonight to have members of the Girl Scout troop number 20321, who I'll ask to come forward and lead us in our pledge. Ladies.
Vice flag.
Does she want to come up?
Yes.
You come up. Come on. You want to walk, you want to walk one way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and now I'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask Vice President Travis Beard to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
I make a motion to confirm the agenda in the agenda order.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan, all in favor? Agenda set. Number four, Proclamations, Recognizations, and Reports Agenda. And tonight I will introduce some beautiful young ladies that led us in our pledge, and if you'll stand and be recognized as I call your name. We have Juanita Valentine, who is a troop leader, and this is troop 20321. Is Juanita Valentine? Okay, she's here. Taylor Babbitt, Peyton Williams, Cecilia Bean, Addison Pippens, Chloe Green, Camry Bell, and Kendall Bell. Let's give these ladies a round of applause. Thank you for being here. You may be seated. 4.2, Recognition of City Employees, Mayor.
Ms. Missy Shelton, okay, I lost you. She's making her way up, and the council hears me say this every meeting, but the, for those of you at home and those of you that don't often come to the meetings, we take a lot of pride in being able to recognize the team members in the city of Tupelo that make the city run smoothly every day. While you often see a council member, myself, or a department head on TV or in the newspaper, we have over 400 dedicated individuals that make the city run smoothly every day. Need to be especially nice to Ms. Shelton, even though there's no relation. She's the one that signs off on our checks, so we have to be super nice to her. But at this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo, with sincere appreciation and thanks, would like to recognize Elizabeth H. Shelton of the Budget and Accounting Department for 10 years of dedicated employment with the city of Tupelo. Thank you, Missy.
Mayor, anyone else?
No, I'm sorry.
We'll move to 4.3, Public Recognizations, and we'll start in here with Mr. Bryan. Ms. Nettie?
I just, I'm just happy to see the Convention and Business Bureau here tonight strongly. I've worked with that board, and I'm just very proud of them, and so glad to have them here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Beard?
I'll have it.
Mr. Bryan?
Well, I just want to say, the Christmas parade was awesome. It's probably one of the best turnouts I've ever seen. I want to thank all those who participated in all the hard work in putting this on. Thank you.
Mr. Jennings?
Mr. President, yes. I know I'm going to put this person on the spot. I have a classmate here I hadn't seen in a long time, and I'd just like to recognize her, Miss Stella, back in the back. Go back a long way, Calhoun County.
All right. Thank you.
So welcome.
We'll move to 4.4, Proclamation, Mississippi Bicentennial Celebration of the Tupelo Spirit Proclamation.
Thank you, President. If I could ask, CVB Director Neil McCoy, please come join me. And you can see around the room the different pictures of historical figures in the city of Tupelo. We'll do this presentation of the proclamation, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. McCoy for brief, I guess you'd say, explanation, and then a video presentation. So, at this time, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, it's my honor to issue the following proclamation of Mississippi Bicentennial Celebration of the Tupelo Spirit. Whereas the state of Mississippi is celebrating the bicentennial anniversary of its statehood in 2017, and the city of Tupelo and the state of Mississippi have played a pivotal role in each other's successes. The beauty of our state and our city are found mainly in the stories of our people, and Tupelo has a unique story to tell about the resiliency and progressive thinking widely known as the Tupelo Spirit, whereas there is great importance in preserving our history for future generations. Therefore, as Mayor of the city of Tupelo, on behalf of the Tupelo City Council, and all citizens hereof, I do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, as Mississippi Bicentennial Celebration of the Tupelo Spirit Day, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, encouraging all citizens of our city to observe a moment of remembrance of this anniversary and ask its citizens to celebrate this day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, Ms. Nettie, for recognizing the CVB staff. I too want to thank them, they're all in attendance tonight, and always when I have the opportunity, want to brag on the work that they do in promoting our city to people all over the world. But tonight, as the mayor mentioned in the proclamation, we all have heard and seen Mississippi's celebration of our bicentennial. You only get that chance once, and we probably won't see another opportunity to celebrate a milestone moment like this for 50 years from now. And so what we wanted to do was to take this opportunity to talk a little bit more about the Tupelo Spirit. So in our new Visitor Center experience, we wanted to interpret what that Tupelo Spirit is and how it has shaped Tupelo. The Tupelo Spirit is a vital part of Mississippi's story, and we collaborated with the Mississippi Bicentennial Commission to produce a video about the Tupelo Spirit. This video is about a minute and a half long and will be played in our Visitor Center in an exhibit called "The Tupelo Spirit." We've done this through three national award winners that have improved the lives of our community, Jack Reed Jr., Nancy Collins, and Steve Tiber, who's here with us tonight. While these three are featured in the video, the Tupelo Spirit will be told through many individual stories of success in our community, like the placards you see around the room. People like Alice Little, Ike Savory, A.M. Strange, George McLean, and numerous others. So the Tupelo Spirit highlights Tupelo's greatest resource, it's our people. Again, this video isn't the entire story, but it introduces visitors to a vision and inspires them to dig deeper into what our community is all about, and it's our people and our resources. So I'm going to play this video, it's about a minute and a half long, and hopefully I can move to where enough people can see this.
Mr. Hooper to the rescue. Sure, our spirit has been tested.
Tupelo Spirit, I guess it means things to different people, but I think most of them since the idea that it's good enough for some of us, it's good enough for all of us.
Where does spirit come from? Is it born? Is it something that is inherently within us? Or is it made? We believe it comes from the imagination, a vision for a better future, and the willingness to make it real.
Great dreams are often born outside of the system, outside of the bodies, and Tupelo has a long history of dreams.
You see it in our heritage, you hear it in our music, you feel it through our history. Sure, our spirit has been tested, but where others see challenge, we see opportunity.
This Tupelo spirit that you're hearing about, it is real. It isn't just a dream, it's an action.
As you explore Tupelo, you get a sense of the Tupelo Spirit. It's the common character that binds the early settlers, the dreamers, even the kingdom of some. We all have it, you have it too. Anything is possible. Imagine what you can do here.
So, yeah, thank you. So again, this video will be featured in the new Visitor Center experience when it opens in February of this, of 2018, and I appreciate you all allowing us to do that and recognizing what the Mississippi Bicentennial is and how the Tupelo Spirit has played a part in forming our community. And obviously, with your service that you make to your community, you're kind of embodying that Tupelo Spirit going forward. Thank you.
We'll move to 4.5, Proclamation in memory of Mr. Ernest R. Fernandez Sr. Mayor.
Thank you, President. I'm not sure, are any family members?
Yeah, they're here.
Okay, would you like to come join, Councilwoman Day?
It's okay, nobody, you can cover me up, that's fine.
At this time, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, in memory of Mr. Ernest R. Fernandez Sr., it's my honor to issue the following proclamation. Whereas Ernest R. Fernandez Sr. was born on April 23rd, 1930, to Herman and Twatty Wax in Amory, Mississippi, and he was a 1952 graduate of George Washington Carver High School, where he served as class president and treasurer. He was the founder and director of Fernandez Products Incorporated, where he was in the hair care business, manufacturing not only his own products, but those for other companies as well, on private labels. He was a trailblazer in his profession, always willing to help and mentor to the next generation that desired to follow in his footsteps. He enjoyed mixing formulas, reading, cooking, and spending quality and meaningful time with family and friends, and he was a faithful member of the St. Paul United Methodist Church, a member of the BBSI Manufacturing Association, and the who's who of American businessmen. Whereas Ernest leaves behind his wife, Valvion C. Fernandez, two sons, Benny Fernandez and Ernest Fernandez Jr., one daughter, Venetia Dorsey, two stepsons who he reared as his own, Romell Terrell and Frankie Charles Terrell. Therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Tupelo, on behalf of the Tupelo City Council and all citizens of Tupelo, I do hereby recognize the life of Mr. Ernest R. Fernandez Sr., and ask all of our citizens to join in remembrance of his life and accomplishments in Tupelo. Thank you so much.
Mayor, could I say something?
Sure, sure.
I felt that it was very fitting to recognize Ernest Fernandez. He was the first businessman that I observed in the community, and he was one of my mentors who encouraged me to move forward. I grew up around him in St. Paul United Methodist Church, so I just felt like it would be very fitting to recognize him. He passed away, and I had his funeral on Monday. But he circulated his products all over the United States and made Tupelo famous in a small way, so I just felt like he needed to get some recognition for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item 4.6, Recognition of Mrs. Doris Jean Pittman.
If I could ask Ms. Doris Jean Pittman to come up and join me, in addition to, and she may get on to me, but in addition to recognizing her for her tremendous work in the city of Tupelo for more than 30 years really, it also happens to be her birthday, and she, I think, has told us not to say, but we'll say anyway, she's 90 years young, so swish her a happy birthday. Before we get to Presentation 2, I wanted to ask any members of Ms. Pittman's family and any members of the Planning Committee, and for that matter, Development Services as well, would you please stand? And obviously, I'm joined by Councilman Buddy Palmer here with me, and Councilman Palmer, I think it's fitting, will present shortly a special token of our appreciation to Ms. Pittman. But on behalf of the city of Tupelo and our city council, Ms. Pittman just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for over three decades of service, volunteer service with the city of Tupelo. When you look at the tremendous growth of the city of Tupelo over the past 30 years, it's absolutely phenomenal. The, from the mall of Barnes Crossson area that didn't exist 30 years ago, to, you know, the beautiful, you know, totally renovated downtown district, to businesses and houses and, you know, all over the city of Tupelo, that has all come through the Tupelo Planning Committee and then through our Development Services Department, which is a key role in interacting with the Planning Committee. For 30 years, Ms. Pittman has overseen, as a member of the Planning Committee, the growth and development of the city of Tupelo. So when you, again, kind of like what you say about the city employees, while you often see other people on the news, you know, on TV or in the newspaper, there are a lot of people making the success of the Tupelo story a reality. There are a lot of people living the Tupelo Spirit that you saw in that video, and one very special person that is a true embodiment of the Tupelo Spirit is Ms. Doris Jean Pittman. And just on behalf of the city of Tupelo, we want to thank you so very much, and present just a small token of our appreciation to you for 30 years of dedicated service with the city of Tupelo. Thank you, Ms. Pittman.
Well, I just want to say it has been a privilege to work with the Planning Committees through all these years, and I appreciate the opportunity that I've had. We've had some great people on there, and they care, and I care, how the city develops, but I wanted to thank you for letting me be a part of it all these years. Thank you.
And now we'll move to 4.7, the highlight of each meeting, the Mayor's Report.
I certainly appreciate the sincerity. I'll be extremely brief this time. Councilman Palmer mentioned the Christmas parade, but just wanted to echo his remarks. We had an absolutely fantastic Christmas parade Friday night. I don't know that official numbers are kept, but it certainly seemed to be a record crowd. There were, there were people the entire route, you know, several people deep, all the way through the parade route, and everything just went fantastic. I don't know if Debbie is here, but downtown Main Street, Association, Public Works, Park and Recs, of course, Police and Fire Department, really all of our departments working together, made that a tremendous success. And then finally, the only other thing, we'd like to remind the council and everyone, our Legislative Christmas Social is this Thursday night, and hope to see everyone there as we celebrate the successes of another tremendous year in the city of Tupelo. With that, I conclude the Mayor's Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll close our regular meeting and open up our public agenda. Item 5, Public Agenda, 5.1, Public Hearings. 5.1A, Public Hearings Regarding Demolition of Properties. Is there anyone here to speak to demolition of properties? No one here to speak to demolition of properties? We'll move to item 5.
I got one.
Excuse me?
Yeah, one.
Okay. If you'll come to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes. Also, state the property you're speaking.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Frank Garrison, and I'm here to talk about location 508 Maple Street. I would like to get a permit from the city to update my electrical and anything else that needs to be done, and to bring everything up to code.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We'll move to 5.1B, Public Hearing Regarding the Rezoning of Property Case Number RZ17-03. Anyone to speak to the rezoning? Okay. We'll move to 5.2, Citizens Hearings, 5.2A, Matter Regarding Hill Place Residents Concerned Chris and Linda Van Horn. Are they here?
Yes.
If you'll come to the podium, you have five minutes. State your name and address, please.
My name is Linda Christine Van Horn, and I live on William Drive at Hill Place. And I'm here this evening because my husband Keith and I moved to Tupelo about two years ago this October. We love our neighbors and chose to live in the city. Thank you. The purpose of Hill Place Association states it's to foster closer unity within our subdivision and to address the interests of the neighborhood by keeping association members informed of issues, promote working together, and to provide a safe, attractive, and desirable neighborhood. Our desire to have an association began over concern for our elderly that are in our neighborhood and safety issues. When we began talking to one another, we learned of more and greater concerns. Was a neighborhood going to be overrun with halfway homes? Who owns this business? Fear and concern was loudly heard at our first association meeting. Fear comes to people not understanding. How does a business operate in our neighborhood? Could we start a car repair operation in our home, or rent our rooms out to people? Does the city have any zoning laws for controlling this situation? Are the employees who are daily in our neighborhood and at these halfway homes bonded, background-checked? Is the property inspected for sanitary condition? Are the patients that are living there safely cared for? And how many are permitted in every location? How many are you going to allow in our home, in our neighborhood? Are you going to permit these in Spring Lake or the new development that's planned for downtown? The recent article of a sex offender's escape did not help our concerns, that was recently in our newspaper. I also went online and read about halfway houses pose full-time problems. Are you going to put us in jeopardy with prisoners that need a halfway point? There are many homes that are well managed, but many incidents of poorly supervised homes. Criminal behavior by employees have occurred in almost every state. I feel that the city, I'm hoping, will help the residents who live in this hill park, we call them allotments in Ohio, sorry, subdivision, stay in the city. We want to live in the city, but I have talked to many people who said they moved and sold their homes mainly because of the halfway homes. And I'm asking you, what can you do to help us?
Ms. Van Horn, thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. At this time, we'll close the public agenda and open up our regular session. Six, The Action Agenda, 6.1, Review, Approve, Reject TA17-02A Amendments to Development Code Congress Living Provisions. This item was tabled, and the chair recommends it stay on the table. Any, okay. We'll move to 6.2, Review, Adopt, Reject Ordinance Rezoning Property and Amending the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tupelo, Mississippi. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Jennings and a second by Councilman Palmer. Mr. Hooper, you just want to share a few comments about this.
I just had to step out and talk with the last resident and certain persons.
This is rezoning some property over there for Native Sun Farms. I think there's been no concern from the adjoining landholders. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Mr. President, I'd just like to say that I asked questions in the work session, I just want to make sure that the residents didn't have any problems, so Shane assured me there wasn't any problem with the residents, because I support concerns of the residents, so it wasn't any, so I'm going to support that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Passes. 6.3, Review, Adopt, Reject Resolution Amending Personnel Policy 507 for the Accumulation and Usage of Overtime and Compensatory Leave.
I move that we would adopt a resolution amending personnel policy 507.
It's been a motion by Councilman Nada Davis and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Mr. Logan, do you want to share your comments on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution makes one change to, one major change to the overtime or compensatory leave section. The last time we visited this was about this time last year. We increased the amount of hours for all employees to 240 hours as allowed by the Fair Labor Standards Act. This particular amendment allows public safety employees, such as policemen and firemen, to obtain or to accrue up to 480 hours of compensation or compensatory leave, and it just comports our handbook and our employment policies to And it just comports our handbook and our employment policies to mirror those of the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I did in the work session ask that we would review this. I would like to be in it in a minute, in a year's time, and look at it, review it, and I think there wasn't any problem with that.
Duly noted, it'll be in the minutes. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All opposed? Item 6.4, Review/Adopt/Reject Amendment to Ordinance Adopted June 25, 1987 Prescribing and Fixing Rates and Charges for the Water Furnished to Consumers by the City of Tupelo, Mississippi and for the Use of Public Sanitary Sewer System and Requiring Payment of Such Rates and Charges.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan. Mr. Timmons?
Counsel, as y'all remember, we discussed this through a work session and then through the pre-board yesterday. We have, at Water and Sewer Department, we have infrastructure needs that we've kind of got budgeted out and planning, especially for the next two years. This next year, we're looking at $3,257,000 worth of infrastructure work, and then in 2018, we're raising it up to $12,175,000. That 2018 work will also include the central pumping station, which centrally, all the wastewater goes into the City of Tupelo before it enters into the wastewater plant. To do this work, we're going to be in need of an increase to fund this, so I'm requesting tonight a 2% increase in water sewer funds, that to be effective January the 7th and following years. You'll read in the ordinance there, it does give the power to the council to opt out of that rate increase whenever time they deem needed.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would like for Johnny just to assure the residents of the city, it only, the 2% is only, depends on how much water you use and how much your rate. I mean, so...
That's correct.
Make sure, even though it's 2%, but more water you use, the higher it would be. The less water you use, the lesser it would be.
That's true.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? We'll move to the routine agenda. Item 7.1, Review/Approve/Reject Minutes of the November 21, 2017 Regular City Council Meeting.
I move we approve this minutes.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.2, Review/Approve/Reject Advertising and Promotional Expenses.
I move that we would approve the advertising and promotion expenses.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Nettie Davis and a second by Councilman Beard. Tonight, we're approving Tupelo Lee County UNCF Committee, $100, Christmas Cards 208, Skate Zone for Mommy and Me, $2,000, Daily Journal Letters to Santa for $310, and Black Business Alliance sponsorship for $300. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.3, Review and Pay Bills.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we pay bills.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Willie Jennings and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer, and tonight, the bills were paid by myself, Lynn Bryan, Travis Beard, Nettie Davis, Buddy Palmer, and under the watchful eye of Missy Shelton and Johnny Timmons. All in favor? Bills are paid. Item 7.4, Review/Approve/Reject FY 2018 Budget Revision Number 2.
I move that we would approve the FY revision at this time.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Davis and a second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. Ms. Hannah, are you here?
Thank you all. The budget amendment before you tonight proposes to increase the general fund budget $13,660 that includes a homeland security reimbursement for the Fire Department of $236 and a $13,424 donation from the Tupelo Sports Council to the Park and Rec Department for the purchase of equipment. And you will actually see that as item 7.8 to accept that donation separately in your agenda packet. Also, the other fund that we're asking to amend is the City Capital Project Fund. We're actually asking to decrease this by $179,992. And actually, what we're doing is when we proposed the budget, which included carryover for unfinished projects in September of 2017, for fiscal year 2018, we were anticipating the money that would be left and the project amounts that were remaining in each account were actually, we had more to roll in some line items and we had less in some line items. So actually, what we're doing is we're bringing that back into balance and actually transferring what was remaining in that fund for each of the line items, and that's what you see in the Capital Project Fund, which is actually a decrease.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
You're welcome.
Item 7.5, Review/Award/Reject Bid for the City of Tupelo's Lee Depository Bank and Give Authorization to Mayor and the City Clerk to Execute the Necessary Documents.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings. Ms. Hannah, you want to...
Yes. Our current contract for our CD depository agreement is up January 31, and state law requires us to bid out these services, and this is just basically where we house our money. And we have to bid these out for a period of no longer than 24 months. And that contract is of the last 24 months. It has been with Trustmark. We received proposals from four banks, and it appears that Trustmark National Bank is the lowest, I mean, the highest in best bid in this case with the interest rate, and we're asking to stay with Trustmark.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.6, Review/Approve/Reject Change Order for the Vietnam Memorial Replica Wall Project.
I move we approve this change order.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. Mr. Farner, you want to share some information regarding this?
Yes, this item and the next item are both just orders of business in closing out the Vietnam Memorial Wall. This one is a change order in the wall for $17,588.96, and these funds will be paid for out of private funds that were also with, in conjunction with the wall.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I think I asked yesterday, some of that work was done before the unveiling.
Yes, ma'am.
All?
You don't have any way of tracking how many visitors we have to visit at the wall. We don't have anything that can sign.
No, sir, not right now, but I know Buddy will keep track of that, but...
Bunch.
It's a lot of people.
We have a lot of visitors out there.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Thank you. Item 7.7, Review/Approve/Reject Construction Change Order Directive for the Vietnam Memorial Replica Wall Project.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan, and this is in conjunction to the last one we just voted on. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.8, Review/Accept/Reject the Donation of Funds from the Tupelo Sports Council to the City of Tupelo, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Alex?
This is a donation from the Tupelo Sports Council for the purchase of a riding paint striper that is going to be used by our Athletic Maintenance Department in aid of striping our fields for soccer, softball, and baseball a lot quicker and more efficiently.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.9, Review/Award/Reject Bid 1491 PW Thermoplastic Traffic Marking for the Public Works Department.
I make a motion that we review, award, reject bid 1491 PW Thermoplastic Traffic Marking for Public Works Department.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Willie Jennings and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan to award the bid. Chuck, are you here? He's way over there.
This is a 12-month bid for our traffic markings, for our thermoplastic and our paint. We had one bidder of Riverside Traffic from New Albany. We've done business with them for a long time, and we feel good about the bid.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Chuck, you can just hang on there for just a second. 7.10, Review/ Ratify/Reject Specifications and Executed Contract Documents for the Street Improvements Prairie Cove and Frog Meadow. Bid was awarded November 7, 2017.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan. Chuck, you want to...
I think this is just some legal documents that they're signing tonight. Take care of that, right, Mr. Logan?
It is. It's the, we've already awarded the bid, we just need to ratify that contract.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Item 7.11, Review/Approve/Reject Final Demolition List.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan and a second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Nettie Davis. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to hear from Development Services about the property located on Maple Street. I missed a meeting yesterday, and I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Who?
This complaint came to us back in March of this year as a burnout. Since that time, we've been in contact with the owner several times. The last letter was sent in November. We had another one back in August. We spoke several times on the phone about repairing, cleaning up. No action to speak of. There's been very little done there, and we're asking the council to let us go in, take this thing down, clean it up for the neighborhood. Just a little history on it, since 2005, we've had over eight code enforcement complaints on this particular property.
How many?
Any other questions?
I've got a comment.
How many?
If you let me. Today, I was, took a tour. Mr. Garrison took me and some other councilmen through his house, and we took a look at it. Not by any means are we authorities on what needs to be demolished and what needs to stand, but Mr. Garrison made a couple of statements while I was there. One was that it had been only one visit from the city to this property, and the second one is that last week, he was denied a permit to do some wiring work on the house. And so I told Mr. Garrison that I would come back and check his information with our code enforcement, and, you know, the code enforcement verified there had been only one visit inside the house, and that was soon after it was either burned or smoke damage to the house. And they are not allowed to go back in that house unless they're invited, and they have not been invited back in the house since the one visit. They have made, according to their records, several conversations with the owner, and there has been no work. Now, this house has been, it's been nine months since it's been in need of repair, and recently, I think last week, is the first time that a permit has been asked for to do some work on the house. And so, you know, the house is definitely in need of repair, and I would support our code enforcement in regards to this property.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So from 205, when y'all made that, I mean, not 205, nine months ago, y'all made that to say that the house was in disrepair?
Nine months ago, we went and spoke with the owner about doing repairs on it. At that time, he had stated that he wanted to clean it out and sell it as basically a shell of a house, just the frame and exposed and like that. To my knowledge, none of that's been done. It's been cleaned up a little bit around, but I think in your packets, you can see the pictures of it where it's still got soot dripping down the front of it, the lattice working all around the bottom of it, still soot stained. It looks pretty bad.
So, so nine months, and y'all had, y'all had been in that one time?
Only inside the property.
Inside.
I personally have made four different site visits. Code enforcement, before the complaint was ever even issued, code enforcement had visited it twice, and I know they've visited it three more times since then on the exterior.
And that's all okay. And I heard Mr. Beard say that he asked for a permit last week.
Yes, sir.
Is that the first permit?
That's the first one that I know of. We spoke about it several times, but that's the first time I know they've been up there to ask for it.
And that's from, that's within nine months?
Yes, sir.
Nine months to get it off?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President, I went out there as well to take a look at it, and I was with Mr. Beard and Mr. Palmer, and I'm not sure where Mr. Beard read this, but he read somewhere that the plumbing, electric, and a couple other things have been compromised. What are you, what are you meaning by compromise on those issues?
During the fire in our session Monday, I believe it was, I spoke about it. The electrical system and all has been damaged from the fire. Anytime you have a fire in there, the heat melts, the insulation makes it unsafe. Everything in it would have to be checked and replaced, more than likely. Due to the amount of damage to the property, it would have to be brought up to today's standards.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I went out there, and this property has been, like Mr. Beard said, it's been sitting there nine months, and I asked him while we were out there, how long, why was it nine months before you did anything, and what's his plan today moving forward? And I really didn't get a response, so I don't really know his plan from this point forward, so I support the Development Services on this issue.
Any other questions or comments? The motion, excuse me.
May I have a comment, please?
Someone that wants to suspend the rules?
No.
No. You had your five minutes. I appreciate you coming. The motion before the council is to approve the final demolition list. All in favor? Motion passes. Item 7.12, Review/Accept/Reject Tupelo Coliseum Commission Minutes of October 23, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.13, Review/Accept/Reject Major Thoroughfare Program Minutes of October 9, 2017.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilwoman Nettie Davis. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.14, Review/Approve/Reject Change Order for the Tupelo SRF FY15 Water System Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Mike Bryan and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Is that right? Councilman Travis Beard. Councilman Travis Beard made the motion, second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Close.
You usually get those mixed up.
Mr. Timmons, you want to share some information regarding this? I think it's a Christmas gift to the council.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Jennings is going to like this one, yes, sir.
This change order is a deductive change order to the tune of $147,863. This is on water sewer, excuse me, water improvements in the Purnell Road, Mount Vernon area when we did the newly annexed areas. The total project finalized out at $827,640. I just need your approval to put this back in the SRF funds.
FRS, that's the total, half fund?
No.
No. Is any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.15, Review, Award/Reject the Following Bids for the Tupelo Water and Light Department. And we're going to take these one at a time. A is bid number 1489WL, 12-month source of supply bid.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Mike Bryan and a second by Councilman Travis Beard. Mr. Timmons?
This is, this bid is for 12 months of source supply bid for water sewer installation. Anytime we use a subcontractor doing work, that's where we pick this up from this bid. And again, this was Mr. Paul Smith. He had the low bid, basically bid the same thing he did last year, so I would recommend this bid to you.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? The next bid is bid B, bid number 1490WL, 2018 Cabin Chassis 4x2.
I move that we would award bid number 1490WL.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Eddie Davis and a second by Travis Beard and Buddy Palmer. It seems like a tie. Mr. Timmons?
This is a dump truck cabin chassis for the water department, awarded the bid at The good thing is it was to Summit International here, local dealer here in the city of Tupelo, so I'd recommend Summit Truck Center to you.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Bid C, bid number 1492WL Directional Boring Machine and Mud System.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Willie Jennings and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Mr. Timmons?
This is a directional rig that we actually have one in the department now. We're wanting to upgrade to pull larger conduit. The bid come in at $185,000. We budgeted $250,000, so we're well in budget. So I'd recommend the mirror to you for this directional boring rig.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? We'll move to the study agenda where there are no items. We'll move to number nine, Executive Session. Do I have a motion? We determine the need for Executive Session.
I move that we would determine the need for Executive Session.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Nettie Davis, second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Mr. Logan?
Mr. President, we have, contrary to what we indicated last night, we do have two opportunities for, one, the sale of property by the city, and the other, acquisition of property by the city. I just want to give a brief statement of counsel. Mr. Cooper, Mayor, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Hannah, and Ms. Faulkner would need to be in Executive Session.
I hear a motion. We go into the executive session?
So moved to Executive Session.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. The council is now in Executive Session. Thank you for coming.